Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. There's a motion to amend.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be presented, which we will come back to. Can we do the one to be read into the record?
Sure. Councilmember Kail Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, October 10th, 2025 to be ACLC Honorees Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. A proclamation has been approved. Our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited as matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council, profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Elena Zaitsov, and for everyone, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. I do not, is this Ms. Zaitsov with us? I do not see her. I don't believe she's online. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Oakland, Singapore. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the Association for the Advancement of Artificial Intelligence and the International Neural Network Society, candidate, Global Intelligence Society, former mayor, 2025. I find it particularly instructive to review what happened in 1977 when Calgary became the mayor. Concerns of this council include local government, artificial intelligence, robotics, quantum computing, supercomputing. This is consistent with my Initiative Three that focuses on local, the primacy of local government, no-party local government, and the importance of optimal information and intelligence. On singularity, which is very near to many of us, Benio, Altman, and in particular Jeffrey, Jeffrey Hinton. Artificial intelligence is information processing and intelligence reasoning that is not primarily of biological genetic origin. This is the most under human control. Artificial general intelligence, AGI, AI agents are at the level of human general intelligence. Semi-autonomous, medium human control, but super artificial intelligence, SAI. SAI share and can share info intel across disciplines. This is a form of global intelligence, in my view, and it's least under human control. The SAI that CMU and the University of Pittsburgh are after could run Pittsburgh city government without the offices of council and mayor. These AIs could, in the case of China and the United States, compete with each other and control our military. John Woo wants China to be an AI society. Do we? Does this city council want the city of Pittsburgh to become an AGI city, a pilot city? Is that what we want? It's not what I want. I do not want the Pittsburgh city or the USA country to be AI-controlled as in Colossus 1970, robot-conflicted as in iRobot, and virtual confused as in Devlet on Drake, and all of the above in, of course, the Matrix. We have a decrease in the population of humans and programs to replace us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carlino Giampolo.
Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. Barbara Warwick, you do not have the strong moral character required to be a council member. Time to resign. You do not represent Panther Hollow, but your shameful, strong public support for the outrageously illegal skate park has brought harm to our community. Time to resign. Last week, the curb in front of my home was painted yellow because of vehicles blocking driveway access. Someone deliberately stepped into the wet paint and walked onto the sidewalk and street in front of my home. And that was scraping off the yellow footprints. You shamefully remarked that I deserved that indignity because of speaking out against the injustice of the illegal skate park. No one deserves to be harmed for any reason. No one. Time to resign. Your shameful comment only affirmed that lack of strong moral character that every council member should possess. Time to resign. The Pittsburgh police tell residents that if you see something, say something to help fight crime in our city. Your shameful message that individuals who do so deserve retribution undercuts that message. Time to resign. Your shameful message also undercuts parents who teach their children to live a life with harm to none. Time to resign. Our prisons are filled with individuals who did not respect the dignity of others. However, prison is not the only place with such individuals. Time to resign. You shamefully spearheaded the official naming of our playground without notice to any residents, a name that doesn't even include Panther Hollow. Time to resign. Both KDKA and WPXI shared this issue, and your shameful message to all viewers was that the skate park is a success story. How can anything be characterized as a success when the means to the end was outrageously illegal and the end brings harm to others? Time to resign. Last week, I spoke about dignity and the many components from which dignity flows, which are on the website pantherhollowplayground.com. Those words were meaningless to you. Time to resign. You have brought shame to this entire city council, and there is more to be said about that shame. You do not have the strong moral character required to be a council member. Time to resign.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amber Tindall.
Good morning. My name is Amber Tindall, and I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill. And I want to speak to council today about the recent petition proposing sanctuary city legislation. There's been a lot of indication of strong public support for policies responding to the recent immigration enforcement in the city and area. And what I want to do is urge council to take this opportunity to create decisive policy consistent with the desires of city residents and which can guide the city's executive branch through what I'm sure is going to continue to be emotionally and politically fraught time. The residents that support and created the suggested policy took a lot of inspiration from cities like Chicago and Los Angeles. And as council is aware, the limitations of the Pennsylvania Home Rule Act and the lack of a city-controlled jail, just the smaller size of the city mean that we can't take as many of the strong decisive protective actions in cities like Chicago and Los Angeles. But what I think council does have the opportunity to do here is put down in legislation, policy of de-prioritized immigration enforcement on behalf of the Pittsburgh Police Department, which would be consistent with the current policy of the Pittsburgh Police, would be consistent with recent and growing numbers of district and circuit federal decisions stating that it is really not in the interest of municipal and county law enforcement to step into the shoes of immigration enforcement officers, and will be consistent with what I see as the general desires of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh. So as we head towards what I believe is an upcoming hearing about this petition, I'd like council to keep in mind the opportunities that we have, the limitations on the policies themselves, and to see this as an opportunity to create positive and strong legislation on the city level. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Mori.
Good morning, council members. My name is Chris Mori. I live in Squirrel Hill, District Eight. I'm here representing in Form Up, a local news nonprofit, covering city council meetings and including surveys so that we can present reader preferences back to council during public comment like now. This week, we had 624 survey responses, six times as many as our previous record. And the first question was regarding the petition for the city to declare itself a sanctuary city, and we asked readers whether they would support or oppose such a declaration. Forty-six percent of respondents supported, while 51% opposed somewhat and strongly in both cases, with only 1% not being sure. A comment from a resident of Garfield in support said, "I should leave the city of Pittsburgh alone. We are open to all people regardless." A comment in opposition from Brookline expressed opposition. "As a taxpayer, I am strongly opposed to Pittsburgh being a sanctuary city for illegals. I will move out of the city if we become a sanctuary for people who chose to break the law." Just for kind of further context, the responses to the survey varied widely by district, but in aggregate, were pretty split down the middle. So, and we have that breakout in the full report, which was emailed as part of the written testimony this morning. In regards to the granting of funds for the West End kind of sidewalks and bus shelters, we took the opportunity to ask readers kind of their perspective on the state of repair of the sidewalks in their neighborhood. Twenty-five percent of respondents rated their sidewalks as poor or very poor, with 34% describing them only as fair. Only 16% consider their sidewalks to be in good repair or excellent. A resident of Lawrenceville shared, "We live on 42nd Street, Main Road connecting Butler to the bridges. The sidewalks are falling apart. Huge chunks of cement missing, and our entry routes coming through. We have children, and the sidewalks are nearly impassable for strollers." In the Strip District, a resident noted, "Smallman doesn't even have sidewalks. Cars parked along the street, and there's nowhere to walk. It's really dangerous for a community full of residents and businesses." District Four and Eight responded with, reported the highest rates of poor sidewalk conditions. And again, the full, kind of full list of all of the comments in support and opposition for both questions are in the report in your email. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker, and I apologize on the front end if I messed this up, is Apalala Ubahana. Seeing that person not present, we'll move on to Ikahana Hal Malkina.
Good evening. My title is Chief Ikahana Hal Malkina. I'm the Grand Inza, the Aroko Confederacy of Aboriginal Native American People. I would like to know, what is your stance when pervasive troops arrive in this region and force our towns and cities into unrest like they currently are and how we are seeing unfold in Portland, Chicago, LA, Texas, and soon Memphis, Tennessee? This unnecessary and unlawful deployment of military forces causing unjustifiable resistance undoubtedly will have a negative impact on local economy, shutting down of our productive society that they plan to avoid such measures isn't put into place. We are all watching this gross misconduct and hypocrisy of law eroding away the people's rights and the rule of law. Rights long established to prevent such discrimination and malicious prosecution. These gross actors must be stopped from allowing chaos to become normalized. I urge city council to take swift action to implement a plan to avoid such destruction. As the city is moving forward with its plans to revitalize empty spaces and transform other spaces in preparation for the NFL draft, the obvious expansion of the society that includes and is open to expanding its college territory is overflowing into residential spaces, and that's why we're seeing unruly behavior such as those motorcycles and cars that create those circles. I forget how you call those, whatever, meetups, some type of meetup. This is the behavior that you are fostering without thinking about what the retribution or what consequences of fostering such environments without having inclusionary talks with how people are to conduct their selves. You're bringing in, mixing different cultures without having an understanding of the culture that exists in this region. Please consider that people need housing, people need food, people need safe schools for their children to attend. Let's get about the business of protecting the people in this city, and stop making shady deals and plant more shady trees. Thank you. That is my time.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please go forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. I'm Jacob Poole. Previous name is Zoltan Jolt-Jacob. I'm from Eastern Europe. And I'm always surprised that I'm the only person ever that comes here and speaks who is an immigrant from Eastern Europe. It's like so much silence in the Pacific area. Everyone is so afraid to talk. And this is because immigration from Eastern Europe here is usually by force. America brought me here because they put me in a large children's camp with thousands of kids between Ukraine and Serbia and Croatia in the 90s during the Soviet Union collapse, changed our names, and brought us to America. And I have surgical scars, medical records, all sorts of falsified information holding me captive here since I was 12 years old. And this is what Pittsburgh calls immigration. I wasn't brought to Pittsburgh first. People did this in Ligonier, Pennsylvania, paramilitary gangs with connections. And they held me captive for 10 years at the University of Pittsburgh, using me for human trafficking activity. And if you don't believe it, if you don't believe it, I was at the University of Pittsburgh from undergrad to PhD, being used for human trafficking, alone, isolated with the name Zoltan Jolt-Jacob as a form of diversity, child abducted from Eastern Europe by American paramilitary gangs for exploitation in the Pittsburgh area. The Pittsburgh metro has 100,000 people here, estimated, brought here from Eastern Europe in the last 30 to 40 years, more than likely like I was, by force as children, falsified medical records, secret surgical scars, medical devices. This is not a joke. This is Nazi-level stuff. And that's my life here. I go to Career, I've been at CareerLink for three years, and everybody at CareerLink laughs at me. I'm a joke at CareerLink. I'm not supposed to get a job like a regular person. I'm supposed to, they give me handouts, secret lists of handouts of human trafficking sites I'm supposed to work at. The expectation is that I'm a slave. I have a four-year record at CareerLink. You can check of how much medical information they've falsified for me because I'm a slave. I'm not supposed to get a job as a regular person. This is, this is how, this is how things work here. It's Nazi-level stuff. I'm alone here, no family, no, no one, constantly being targeted to be taken to human trafficking sites, falsified documents, falsified name, falsified identity, child abducted, with thousands of kids from Eastern Europe. Because people just in 90s just went there, and paramilitary gangs gathered up 10,000 kids into camps, and Americans just went there and said, "I want this one. I want this one. I want to belong with blue eyes." They just took it, picked it up and brought it here. So I want people to do a census of how many of us are being held captive here for the last 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, council. Always so good to be here. I just stopped past today because yesterday we had a telephone conversation with the RFP that we all stood here, packed the hallway, caused all this commotion. I'm gonna paint a picture, and I want you all to follow me. I'm telling you all today, I want you all to remember this when this RFP passed. The two blackest people in the room passed this motion. They went strong for it, and I take my hats off for them. The work they did is impeccable. But yesterday, I learned something, and I spoke on the telephone to, and the mayor's office was on the telephone. But I'm gonna paint this picture, and you all tell me if I'm wrong. Kahari Mosley is attached to One Hood. President Lavelle is attached to Grayson, Reverend Grayson's organizations. I'm gonna leave you all with that. I'm gonna let that simmer, because I want you all to understand what we all are saying in the community. Some of you all sat here, and you all voted on this because I was one of them people that came down here and said, "Hey, we need this," and we do. And some of you all's communities, all nine communities won't get some of this. But this ain't right. This is not right. They told us, they led us down a rabbit hole, and it's not right. And I just want you all to listen, pay attention to what's happening. Because if this is the case, if this is a case, then seven of you all should be going to these two people and saying to you all, "They are wrong. Y'all are wrong for bamboozling the people of the city of Pittsburgh. Y'all are wrong." We sit up and we talk about what number 45 and 47 is doing to the United States of America. How dare you all do this to the black community who you all say y'all serve?
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the high-rise up at the top of Bedford with 190 apartments. I come as an advocate for children, youth, families, hospital workers, homeless people, and the elderly at Cady River Irving. I come because we live in a building where we are being beat with hammers and sticks by Rashida. She actually, after she beat the man with this, the new, the new resident with the stick, she came a couple days later, standing out, if you know about the Bible, you know there was a big giant standing out talking about who they was gonna kill. Well, she came up to the building and talked about whose ASS she was gonna kick, and it was the man on the third floor, a resident who has a dog. When he saw her on the third floor, which she, she's not allowed in the building. She's been banned since 2020. 2022, me and my daughter went up because I'm being threatened. I better keep my mouth shut. When my daughter pulls up to come to take me to bingo, she says, "Oh, ma, I felt so bad. I got to pass her while she's talking about you." But then the lady that was going with us, Kathy, said, "Oh, Nikki." She said, "Mommy, she saved me. I didn't have to walk past her." Now, she comes in the building every night at a certain time. They see it on the camera. Now, I usually sweep in the morning. I had been doing this for years, because we had five janitors that went down to one, Steve, who gives us much respect. So I would sweep in the morning for him. Okay, I went down at 6:00 in the morning, and I sweep, and I come back up, and I wanted some pops. I go down, and I come back. This is about 7:00 in the morning. Well, a woman runs on the elevator as I get off, and I look back, and that's when she jumped off. Yes, it's Rashida. Call the police. Tell your daughter I'm in the building. When we called the police, and I called my daughter, she came to the building, the policeman come in, you know what he said? "Ms. Brown, it's Arbor and Patique who's dropping the ball." Now, I have someone that came to me and said, "Ms. Brown, you're never gonna win," because Patique is supposed to be kin to these two women. They had a function up in the building, and he came, he spoke. When I saw him, I walked away. He came, and he said, "Ms. Brown." I said, "Please don't speak to me." I said, "You've let these two women be a people and come and threaten me. Now, the mother's threatening me." Listen, Bernadette, who said she has studied to be a paralegal, as I also did when I worked at Neighborhood Legal Services, and she's telling me, she said, "Ms. Brown, they're gonna give you, they're not gonna renew your lease. They're just gonna say you're a troublemaker." I'm telling you ahead of time, I'm coming down to fight for the (inaudible).
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The missing child, Sarice Taylor, Special Agent Sunshine.
How y'all doing? You all right? You okay?
Now's the time to choose whom you will serve. Don't you let another day go by without God on your side.
Agent Sunshine, please address council.
I wanna talk about being capable. Let's talk about that. John 15:5 says, "Jesus said, 'I am the vines, you are the branches. If you remain in me and I in you, you will bear much fruit.'" The fruit that I choose to bear is to use whatever gift I have received to serve others faithfully administering God's grace in its various forms. That comes from 1 Peter 4:10. Why is it, Lavelle, you block my gifts everywhere I go? I know it's you. And Mosley, is Leroy your father? Because the resemblance is uncanny. It's uncanny. One of y'all my father. Somebody gonna sit in that one. Really? You didn't want me. You threw me away. But here I stand, still praising God. Thank you, Jesus. At times, God will use hardships to shake us out of misguided mindsets. Unexpected difficulty removes distractions, teaches us, refocuses our mind on the Lord, and is often followed by a moment of great clarity. Want some clarity? I'm not dead, but on paper, by fraud I am twice. And whoever signed off on that, I curse you to death in Jesus' name. So we'll see if you sign off on anything else like that again. I'm married by fraud. Really? I don't have a phone. I'm homeless and celibate almost 10 years. So whoever I'm married to ain't handling his damn business, is he? He can't. He's weak. He can't. He's weak. He's a punk, whoever he is. Stay in the darkness you live in. Thank you, Jesus, for loving me. I will continue to love you and myself above all others in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will now return to proclamations. We have one to be presented by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. The folks from Alina's place, please come forward. Every year in October, I do a proclamation for domestic violence and for breast cancer awareness. And today, we're gonna do one for Alina's place. And come up here, come up here. Yeah, come up here. Oh, look, we dress alike. Okay. Whereas Alina Shayhiket was born in Russia to Jan and Ellie. At the age of three, if I say any names wrong, correct me when you come up, okay? And I apologize in advance. At the age of three, she and her family immigrated to the United States. Alina was a gifted young woman with a deep love for singing, dancing, and acting, captivating audiences with her grace, talent, and heartfelt performances. Oh, that sounds like me. No, just kidding. I'm gonna play for the Pirates instead. And whereas Alina graduated from Montour High School in twenty, in 2015, and enrolled at the University of Pittsburgh with the goal of becoming a doctor of physical therapy, her decision was inspired by a serious knee injury that ended her pursuit of a professional dance career. And she aspired to help others overcome physical setbacks that threatened their dreams. And whereas on October 8th, 2017, Alina's Light was tragically taken by her ex-boyfriend in her off-campus apartment. In the wake of this unimaginable loss, her family and loved ones committed themselves to creating lasting change in her honor. And whereas, her parents, determined to preserve their daughter's legacy, established Alina's Light, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to raising awareness about domestic violence, educating communities, and offering emotional and social support to those affected. And whereas, through Alina's Light, they also work to prevent future tragedies by sponsoring lifesaving SOS devices and advocating for legislative reforms, including Alina's Law, Senate Bill 123, and House Bill 104, aimed at enhancing protections for victims of domestic violence. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the work of Alina's Light in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the work of Alina's Light in recognition, I just read that, I apologize, and recognizes, and applauds their unwavering dedication of her, their, her family and supporters in transforming personal tragedy into a powerful movement of change. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, to be Alina's Light Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
On favor, say aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm gonna just say a few words, and then, and then we'll talk, and we'll take a photo with all the council, okay? But thank you for the work that you do on behalf of everyone suffering from domestic violence. I would like to give a little bit of information on how people might be able to get involved, donate, or whatever they can do to help support the, the work that you're doing. Introduce yourselves. We're gonna all introduce yourselves. Yeah, well, you first speak.
My name is Ellie, and I'm Alina's mother, and I'm founder of nonprofit organization Alina's Light in honor and memory of my daughter.
My name is Becca. I'm one of Alina's friends from college. She was my roommate at the time, so I'm thankful to be a part of this with her family. And I'm a board member of Alina's Light.
My name is Sasha Phillips. I'm an attorney with Dentons, Cone, and Grigsby. I'm also a healing arts director with Alina's Light. And I am really, really thankful for this honor and this proclamation honoring Alina's name.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Alina's father, Jan Shayhiket. Also, I'm a president of Alina's Light, and thank you so much for this honor. Thank you.
My name is Renee Zuccarello, and my daughter danced with Alina in a company for seven years. I had Alina in my home. She was a beautiful young lady who did not deserve what happened to her. And lastly, when she went for her PFA, when you read the transcript of the day, the judge was literally begging Alina to say that she needed this PFA. And Alina never thought in a million years that this man she loved would ever hurt her. And so many of the women who are faced with, with domestic violence never want to believe that this could happen to them. And that's why we fight.
I'm just gonna say, I do this proclamation, this is the last one I'll do before I retire, but a lot of people know, well, my colleagues mostly know, that my sister raised two of her nephews because their mother was stabbed four times in front of their kids. And when she died, my sister raised those two boys. I think people don't realize the impact domestic violence has on the family, on the kids that live through that. And one of the boys that my sister raised committed suicide two years ago. And so the impact is lasting. These kids were little when this, this happened. And just like your stories, there are people left behind that are hurting and that want people to know that there's help out there. And so that's why I do it every year, so you know that there is help. If you're in a situation, even if you're not sure what it is, if it just don't feel right, call for help. There's help available. Everyone, will you come up for the photo, please?
I'll say a couple of words about Alina's Law, which I believe is going to move the needle to keep Pennsylvania and its residents safe while we're all gathering for the pictures. So this day, Alina's Light, and Alina's Light Day came from unimaginable tragedy that will forever be imprinted with Ellie, Jan, Alina's friends, and with the rest of us who were involved with this. I was Alina's PFA attorney, pro bono PFA attorney, and unfortunately, that PFA never helped her. What we're hoping to do is, we're hoping to move the needle forward, and this is where we need your support. Alina's Light has been actively advocating for Alina's Law, and this year, I believe, it may become a reality. The statistics are chilling. I told you about this unimaginable tragedy, and that's where Alina's Light comes from. But Alina's Light also comes from love and from determination to protect those whom we still can help. And also, from determination to shine the light on this horrible domestic violence statistic. Councilwoman Kail Smith has mentioned personal tragedies. The statistic is devastating. Hundred and nineteen people were lost to domestic violence in 2023. Over a decade, that number went up to sixteen hundred. Those are lives lost. This impacts every community. Even survivors cannot cope with this, cannot thrive, cannot move forward because of this tragedy. Their family members, their friends, those who are lost, because that number keeps growing and growing and growing and growing every year. If you look around the room right now, just take a look around the room, one in every three women deals with domestic violence at some point in her lifetime, right here in Pennsylvania in the 21st century. Alina's Law is the lifesaving measure that we're moving forward. Please educate yourself. Please take a look at Alina's Law, at Alina's Light website. There's a segment on Alina's Law. We're hoping to move it forward. We're hoping to keep Pennsylvania, or to make Pennsylvania safer for everybody there. We need your support on Alina's Law. Thank you.
One more time, on behalf of Alina's Light, and personally as a mother of Alina, I'd like to say thank you, thank you so much, from the bottom of my heart for this recognition. Receiving this recognition is very meaningful and emotional. At the same time, I'm not gonna lie, I feel very emotional right now. Tomorrow, October 8th, will be eight years since my daughter's life was tragically taken. And standing here and accepting this beautiful recognition is painful, but I feel very grateful and thankful that our organization is able to provide so much help to our communities, and that we have found such a beautiful way to honor our daughter. And my heart is so happy to see that Alina's Light is shining every bright, every day. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilwoman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
New new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 2323, Resolution Amending Resolution 468 of 2024, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side Parking Enhancement District by increasing the total not to exceed amount by $702,360 for a new total not to exceed $1,377,360 over six years. Bill 2324, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000 to Reimburse the City's Portion of Illegal Settlement. Bill 2337, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $415,000 Within the 2025 Operating Budget Expenditures from the Department of Finance Debt Services Interest to the Department of Public Works Bureau of Facilities Property Services Maintenance in the Amount of $250,000 for Playground Upgrades and the Department of Public Works Bureau of Operations Property Vehicles in the Amount of $165,000 in Order to Increase the Contracted Allocation to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Express Purpose of Purchasing a Rat Packer for DPW.
Councilwoman Gross was on Zoom, but she had to exit to take care of a matter in her business district, but she does not have any new papers. So that takes us to Councilwoman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Mosley presents Bill Number 2062, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement, Agreements and/or Amendments with the Borough of Munn Hall for the Purpose of Mutually Cooperating in Street Operations, Snow and/or Ice Services at No Cost to the City. And Bill Number 2325, Ordinance Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement with the Borough of Ingram with regard to the City Providing Fire Protection Services to the Borough pursuant to the General Local Government Code.
Motion to waive Rule 8 on 2062?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
In your post, Bill 2062 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 2326, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $4,200 Within the 2025 Operating Budget from City Council Postage to the Office of the City Clerk for the Purpose of Professional Services.
And Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number 2327, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Nicole Freeman and her attorney, David Landay, for a Single Payment in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $20,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2328, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Finance, and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into agreements of sale with various property owners in the Seventh Ward of the City in order to advance the Newton Street Project at a Total Cost not to Exceed $1,104,657. Bill 2329, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in order to advance the Herndon Street Landslide Remediation Project at No Cost to the City. Bill 2330, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Tree Pittsburgh for a Restoration Project known as Rising Main 3, consisting of a deforested corridor in Highland Park at a City Cost not to Exceed $275,257.04 over a Period of Five Years. Bill 2331, Resolution Amending Resolution 707 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an Agreement or Agreements or the Use of Existing Agreements with ENL X North America Inc. for Energy Consultant Services in Connection with the City's Aggregated Purchase of Electricity along with other members of the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium by Extending the Term by Five Months at No Additional Cost to the City. And Bill 2332, Resolution Amending Resolution 208 of 2025, which authorized an amended Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment and Accessories, Equipment Support, Infrastructure, and Professional- support, infrastructure, and professional services in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five by increasing the authorized amount by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Department of Public Works for a new total not to exceed amount of eight million seven hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Motion to waive Rule Eight on Twenty-three Thirty-two?
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill Twenty-three Thirty-two will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Twenty-three Thirty-three. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic site under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as Police Station Number Three, also known as the Office of Municipal Investigations Building at twenty-six oh three Penn Avenue, located in a strip district neighborhood, Second Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Thank you. And for myself, we could first do the communications.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number Twenty-three Thirty-four. Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting City Council, the attached status update from the Grants Office for the weekend at October third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Need a motion to read, receiving, file? On favor, say aye. Any opposed? The bill has been read, received, and filed. We have two appointments.
Bill Number Twenty-three Thirty-five. Resolution appointing Mary Bakovich to the Pittsburgh HIV AIDS Commission per Title One Administrative Article Nine, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter one seventy-nine C, Establishment of Pittsburgh HIV AIDS Commission and of the Pittsburgh City Code of Ordinances. And Bill Number Twenty-three Thirty-six. Resolution appointing, excuse me, Richard Krug to the Pittsburgh HIV AIDS Commission per Title One Administrative Article Nine, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter one seventy-nine C, Establishment of Pittsburgh HIV AIDS Commission and of the Pittsburgh City Code of Ordinances.
We need either a motion to approve or to interview.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but I do wanna say, I think it's that we should be careful of how many people we're appointing and allowing to be appointed to boards and authorities with just weeks left before, you know, the election. And, and we know that there may be a different direction with a lot of different things. But I'll make a motion today to approve, and I think the people for their willingness to serve on all the boards and authorities and commissions.
Discussion?
Yeah, just to quickly note that these two appointments came from the board chairs themselves, so.
Yeah, that's okay, I don't care where they came from, I'm just saying in general, we don't know what direction it's gonna happen.
No, 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 I understand. I mean, I'm happy to interview.
I mean, I did with Bill Paduta too last year, I think I voted down all the people for the PWA board, so, I mean, it's not like I.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both appointments have been approved, and we now move on to unfinished business, and we also have two appointments.
Bill eighteen oh eight. Resolution appointing Megan Leach as a member of the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors with a term to expire May first, two thousand and thirty. Bill eighteen oh nine. Resolution appointing John Fishback as a member of the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors with a term to expire May first, two thousand and thirty.
And we need a motion to approve.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Both appointments have been approved. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Twenty-three Sixteen. Reported a committee on finance and law for October one, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Twenty-two Sixty-six. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a subscription agreement, agreements and amendments thereto with Walters Cluer, Inc., for access to a subscription database to support federal litigation and related matters for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-three cent over three years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents, excuse me, Bill Twenty-three Seventeen. Reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for October one, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Twenty-one Thirty-three. Resolution amending Resolution three thirty-six of two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to develop a mobility plan in the West End by increasing the grant amount by one hundred thousand dollars for a new total project cost of two hundred thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Councilman Smith?
I just wanna thank Jake Pollak and David Geiger for working with me on making sure we had the correct wording, 'cause I don't want people thinking that we're passing the transportation plan, which they didn't want, but it's the mobility plan and which they do, they're interested in. But I am gonna pay attention to who's pushing, you know, what, and who's doing what, and who's all involved, because I think some of the things that I see happening are organizations from outside of our district coming into our district and working with a few of the organizations, but to get what they want essentially, and convincing people that these are the projects that they need. And so that's one of the reasons I called for the post agenda and on the nonprofits, because I'm not gonna allow nonprofits that have no vested interest in our community making, making decisions for areas that they have no, no interest in no, other than getting something done that they want done. And I will say that when I saw the projects down in Shortshire City for traffic calming and other projects, and now we're having traffic projects up on Southern Avenue, traffic calming, and some of the projects, I wanna say were long before this current director, who I think is amazing, I think Jeff, the acting director, is amazing director, and I think he'd be a great director. So it's not, it's not, this is not in regards to him, but these are previous projects. And what I will say is that we're hearing a lot from the residents that actually live there that don't want these projects. We're hearing from business owners that don't want certain projects. And I think we really need to rethink this entire plan and talk about it a little bit more publicly, and so that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start organizing around that, and first, I'm starting with the post agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilperson Robert Sharland, presenting the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number Twenty-three Eighteen. Reported a committee on human resources for October first, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Twenty-two Sixty-four. Resolution amending Resolution five fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-two, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with Industrial Organizational Solutions, Inc., for professional consulting services in connection with police lieutenant and police sergeant position development by extending the term by one year and increasing the not to exceed amount by seventy-four thousand dollars for a new not to exceed total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land, Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Twenty-three Nineteen. Reported a committee on land use and economic development for October first, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Twenty-one Fifty-one. Resolution approving conditional use application under the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning, Article Five, Chapter nine eleven, Section nine eleven oh two for Pittsburgh Water property owners for authorization to new construction and site work at the Pittsburgh Water Campus located at nine hundred Freeport Road, zoned RIVIMU Riverfront Industrial Mixed Use, twelfth Ward, Council District Number Nine. And Bill Twenty-two Sixty-seven. Resolution amending Resolution five thirty-one effective August sixth of two thousand and thirteen, providing for the implementation of a residential parking permit program, Area L, in a central north side community, Council District One, to expand the district to include an additional address pursuant to Pittsburgh Code, Chapter five forty-nine.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Twenty-three Twenty. Reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for October one, two thousand and twenty-five with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Twenty-two Sixty-five. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable in favor of southwestern Pennsylvania Commission for the second of two installments for the two thousand and twenty-five annual membership dues in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final, ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received illegally required numbers of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions, anything for members? Councilwoman Smith?
What about this bill?
Did I skip you?
I can't see, can you see what this is? It's a bill for final action.
I apologize.
No, no, it's not your fault. You read it?
Yeah, this is, it was put in front of me.
It was supposed to be under somebody else's committee, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anything, no worries. Anything else, members? If not, that takes us to meeting announcements. This afternoon at one o'clock, council will hold an executive session on Bills Twenty-three Twenty-four, Twenty-three Twenty-seven as relate to litigation matters. Also, this afternoon at two o'clock, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill twenty twenty regarding the Pittsburgh Water Asset Transfer. Speaker registration will close at twelve noon today. Also, tomorrow, Wednesday, October eighth, at ten AM, council will meet in our Standing Committee meeting, speaker registration will close at nine AM. Also, tomorrow afternoon, with sessions at one thirty and two thirty, council will hold a briefing on two, the two thousand and twenty-six budget. And then on Thursday, October ninth, at eleven AM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bills Twenty-one Fifty-two, Twenty-one Fifty-three, Twenty-one Fifty-four, Twenty-one Fifty-five, and Twenty-one Fifty-six regarding the historic designation of the Ross and Aspen Wall Pumping Stations, the Rachel Carson Roberto Clemente Bridge, and Andy Warhol Bridges and Shinley Park. Speaker registration will close at nine AM the day of the hearing. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill, please, please fill out the form on the council webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, twenty-one thirty-eight. Also, just so members are aware, for this afternoon's public hearing on the Pittsburgh, the transfer of the water asset, I actually jumped the gun. I was trying to get as much scheduled before our budget hearings, but Councilwoman Gross said I actually held it and asked for a post agenda and a public hearing, but she wanted the public hearing to occur after the post agenda. So this afternoon, just so you're aware, I'm gonna simply gavel in the meeting and then recess it, and then we'll schedule the public hearing at another time after her post agenda, so don't feel the need to show up today, this afternoon. Anything else, members? Councilwoman Smith?
Just briefly, I, when I thanked everyone to help, for helping me with the bill regarding the mobility plan, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Warwick, because this is something she's really passionate about, and she was willing to work with me and hold it, and we set a good example for the rest of the country, how opposite ends could work together. So I just wanna say thank you very much for the work that you did in helping me get through and get right answers for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, and I did wanna just take a moment, you know, to thank, you know, our entire public safety team, in particular our Pittsburgh Police, for their response to the tragedy that started out in Robinson Township that ended in District Nine in East Hills, which also resulted in a police detective being injured. And I spoke to the Public Safety Director, Lee Schmidt, I thank him for his briefing as well as his own five commander, and I understand the police detective is, you know, resting at home and is in great spirits, and, you know, it was a very minor injury, but anytime we get shot, you know, serious, so again, you know, I let public safety know to send a message to the detective to let them know that I was thinking about him, and I just wanted to, you know, say it here as well, thank them for the quick response. And thankfully, you know, what was already a tragedy didn't escalate into a bigger tragedy, but also, you know, my thoughts out to the gentleman that was working at the hotel who lost his life that day, as well as to the woman as well who was injured in that domestic violence situation, so, but I did wanna just give a shout out to our public safety team for their incredible work that day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Just real briefly, I just wanna say thank you for bringing that up, and I think going forward, I won't be here for the, for the votes coming up with the new chief of police or with the new public safety director if there's a new one, but I do wanna say how important it is to make sure that council is really engaged in that process, that, you know, the community voted, the city voted, and they really want, you know, the laws enforced in the city of Pittsburgh, so it's important to have a public safety director that understands Pittsburgh. And I wanna thank Lee Schmidt, because I think he went from, you know, as assistant director or deputy director to running this, you know, department for, you know, several years now. And, you know, before him, Wendell Hystic, I don't think there was a better, I don't think there was a more qualified public safety director than Wendell at the time, because even though he and I would have our battles, I knew that he knew public safety. And so I think going forward, having people in those positions are something that I hope that council will be watching. I know me as a resident, I'll definitely be watching, and I'll be very vocal if I don't appreciate the direction it's going, because people voted for change, not a different person doing the same thing. So I'll just say, people want the laws enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, a motion to approve the minutes in adjournment.
So move.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.